Please, we are gonna start. I called to order the closed session-
Makes us think that nothing will happen with the Carousel Mall while we are alive. And so it is of utmost importance that for the sake of civic and moral virtue that we do the most basic, that you folks do, the most basic thing and censure those individuals. And Teddy, Fred, well more so Teddy because it was your name that was said, with regards to the harassing of staffers, these folks in this city, under Valdivia and so many other people have suffered so much, we have a very high turnover rate, it is very difficult for us to get staffers who will actually stay here, let alone staffers in general. If you attack working people who are just trying to make ends meet, before I die Teddy, I will make sure that every union that ever endorsed you and that everybody in the Labor Council will remember till the end how you have treated your workers. Because either Rochelle is lying about everything, every single thing that she has said in the "I see you nodding," the people on the camera can't see that but he's nodding. Unless Rochelle Klein is lying about literally everything, you should be censured, you should never get the endorsement of a union, and we need to get somebody better in that seat. And I'm very happy to say, we will. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Maria Flores has arrived. Next speaker?
This does not have a name on the speaker card.
I'm sorry?
It does not have a name on the speaker card?
I believe, count-
Okay.
Thank you. You may speak. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm here to talk about what you're going inside of Closed Session to speak of, and one, the evaluations, of which I have been here multiple times now, to discuss how I did not believe that the incoming council members would be able to quite effectively speak on evaluating the city manager, city clerk, or the city attorney's office. What I would like to say is, I'm continuously being able to see that there are so many issues with your agendas. Those things have been brought to your attention, and if the city clerk would be more mindful about that agenda and the errors that are on that agenda, I believe, Mr. Flores, you did get an email from a community member, correct, regarding that? Instead of double dating with council members on Valentine's night to what I believe to collude with what may be happening inside of Closed Session this evening, we might be better off. So, but the question still calls, what is it that city clerk is colluding with the city council members on or about? So I'm waiting for Councilmember Sanchez to do what he did the last time that a council, a community member spoke about this and nodded his head and act like it didn't happen. I can release any photos of you all that night in the city of Rialto, discussing what? Discussing what? More of which we have seen inside of IEE CN's article today, about the collusion, about the corruption of which council clearly demonstrates, of which they think that they have the power to disrupt the city of San Bernardino's business and to target council members, employees of our city. So it appears that evaluations are very important, and it appears, new council members, that you needed to have the evaluations come from the prior council that had sat with these folks for the past four years, in order to give you all the knowledge that you would need in order to make accurate, knowledgeable decisions, so that our city would be in the most safest place to move forward. But that is not what you sought after, no matter how many times I came to this dais. So again, I ask, those evaluations need to be accurate, those evaluations need to be brought in front of the community members, as we have the right, we are the paying tax members of this city who deserve that. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes all the speakers. We will now- Good evening, everyone. Welcome, and thank you for being here, and thank you to those viewing remotely. I called to order this joint regular meeting of the Mayor and City Council, and the Mayor and City Council acting as the successor agency to the redevelopment agency of the city of San Bernardino, the San Bernardino City Housing Authority, and as the San Bernardino Joint Powers of Finance Authority at 5:06 PM. Madam City Clerk, please call for the roll.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Here.
Councilmember Barra is absent. Councilmember, Mayor Protim Figueroa?
Here.
Councilmember Charette?
Here.
Councilmember Canas?
Here.
Councilmember Flores?
Present.
Councilmember Ortiz?
Here.
And Mayor Tran?
Here. Thank you. We will now move on to invocation and pledge. Assistant Pastor Dr. Gwendolyn Dowdy Rogers from Church of the Living God will lead tonight's invocation. Please approach the podium at this time. And Israel Hager from Holcomb Elementary School will lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Please all rise.
Good evening, Mayor, and good evening, council staff and to our community. It's an honor to be here tonight to lead you in prayer, so I would ask you if you would bow your heads at this time. We come before an omnipotent and omnipresent God that sees all. We ask tonight that our city leaders undertake their solemn task of governance of our city. We pray that they are infused with your divine wisdom and insight. We ask that God would grant you the deep understanding of the needs and the aspirations of all citizens, ensuring that no voice goes unheard or is marginalized, and that they be guided by principles of love as you strive to govern and uphold the dignity and the rights of every individual. We acknowledge you, God, as the ultimate source of wisdom and truth, trusting in your guidance to steer us and all on the path of righteousness and justice. And it is in Jesus' name that I pray this prayer for us all. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God and the visible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor Dr. Gwendolyn Dowdy Rogers, and thank you, Israel. We would now move on to closed session report. Mr. City Attorney, is there anything to report from closed session?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. The Mayor and City Council met in closed session for the items listed on the agenda, items A, B, C, D, and E. The only reportable action relates to item A, Romanet III, regarding Tamika Tate et al. versus City of San Bernardino et al., United States District Court Case Number 24 CV 02331. There was a motion by Councilmember Sanchez and a second from Councilmember Canas to settle the case at $75,000. It was approved unanimously with Councilmember Ibarra absent. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you so much. We will now move on to presentations. We do have one. It's the proclamation for Women's History Month in the city of San Bernardino, March 25. Council would like to join me to the front. And Daphne Hawkins, are you here? Is Daphne here? I have Daphne, Kayla Moore, Janaya Shahid of The Love Program. They're not here. Okay, so perhaps we could do this in the next agenda. But then I do want to give a big shout out to all the ladies here. Can we all rise, all the ladies? Oh, you're gonna, oh, okay, wait. I'm dropping, okay, Mr. City Manager. The City Manager reports next, and you're gonna give us an element of surprise on that. Okay.
Yes, thank you, Mayor and members of the City Council. Bill Guardo, your interim City Manager, it's my pleasure to be here. Been here all of eight days, and I will tell you, enjoying meeting such wonderful and dedicated people. The Council's been very gracious in welcoming me, and so I am gonna be giving the report. Before I get into the slide of some information I wanted to share with the community, that I did have a great session with the City Council. They provided me some direction on what they'd like me to work on, a whole list of items, but I'll identify the top three. One is budget and budget update, our finances. We will be coming back on the 19th with our audit and our mid-year budget update, so we'll be doing that on the 19th and share with the community what is happening in that regard. Second item is the Navigation Center. Obviously, it's a very important project for the city, and we will be working towards getting that moving quickly here in our community. And the last item is be able to provide, when I complete my assignment here, some organizational assessment of our team. I will tell you that I've met some really dedicated and wonderful people so far, so I'll be glad to do that upon my completion here. So, if we can go to the first slide, please. You know, one of the great things about this Women's History Month is that we have a group of dedicated women here who serve our community day in and day out, starting with Mayor Tran, Councilmember Ibarra, Councilmember Canas, and Dr. Ortiz. But we also have some really fantastic staff members here that serve our community and our businesses as well, our deputy city manager, interim finance director, our human resources director, animal services director, our city attorney, and our city clerk. So I want to thank them for their contributions and recognize them as well.
But also, I just want to mention to all the ladies out in the audience-
Yes.
-and those viewing, Happy Women's History Month, and it's not just today, this month is every day, so.
Yes, every day. That is correct. Thank you, Mayor. So as we look for a permanent CEO, if you will, city manager, there is a desire by the City Council in conjunction with Ralph Anderson that is doing the search, if you will, to identify preferred skills and experience our residents would like to see. And there is a survey out in our community. There is a link that you can find on our website, it's also in Spanish. I would encourage the community members to go to our website and click on that so that the council can get input from you on what qualifications, characteristics you want in our future city manager. So, thank you. I've had a very, very busy week. I'd like to share with you that we hit the ground running, me and my team, along with our department heads. And one of the things that I committed to is continuing our relationship and building our relationship with our key stakeholders. Had some great introductory phone calls with Dr. Morales at Cal State San Bernardino, who was happy to hear from me, as well as Superintendent Oriano from the San Bernardino City Schools. He remembered that we played Little League baseball together years ago. I didn't remember, but he reminded me, and it was a great, great conversation, and we're gonna continue our relationship and foster that greater with the school district. And then I have an in-person meeting with Supervisor Baca. He's anxious to help the city when he can, and so we're gonna work on getting him some specific information on projects where he can help us move those forward as well.
Could I interject you one second?
Yes.
Our superintendent reached out regarding the education bridge. Could you look into that and see how the city and the school district could-
Okay.
-bring that to life? Thank you.
We'll look at that, absolutely. Yes, for sure. Other items of interest, we had, we received a $2.9 million grant from Caltrans to construct raised street medians on E Street between Fairway Drive and 10th Street, a total distance of 3.5 miles. These medias will contribute to both vehicle and pedestrian safety. Between March of 2019 and March of 2024, this segment on E Street had 110 accidents and two fatalities. This application in cooperation was a competitive grant in collaboration between Public Works and the City Grants Team, and so we have money to do that, which is fantastic. Library partners with In-N-Out for our reading program. We're partnering with them for kids ages four to 12 with its cover-to-cover reading program. And now through April 12th, for every five library books read or 300 minutes of reading, you will receive a certificate good for one free In-N-Out cheeseburger or hamburger. And to participate, residents must sign up at one of our public library locations. That's great. Other city news, the Del Rosa Post Office renamed in honor of Dr. Margaret Hill, which is wonderful. Hundreds of friends, family, and civic leaders gathered last Friday for a dedication ceremony renaming the Del Rosa Post Office in honor of our San Bernardino resident, community leader, and educator, Dr. Margaret Hill. I want to congratulate my alma mater, Aquinas Basketball, for winning the CIF Southern Section Championship. Last Friday, they beat San Dimas 59-41 to win the Section 3A Championships. They did have, they did go to state yesterday. Unfortunately, they fell to North Bakersfield last night in the state tournament, ending their outstanding season. And Mayor, we will be bringing them to our next meeting and recognizing them for their achievements here on behalf of our community. And last but not least, we applied, San Diego Valley College applied for a technology, they'll be celebrating the grand opening of their $34 million applied technology building. This 114,000-square-foot building will provide hands-on job training for careers like auto technology, heavy-duty truck, water technology, HVAC, and refrigeration and the like, and that's a great, great addition to our community. Last but not least is the groundbreaking for our Secumbi Lake Project. On Monday, the City Council, we, actually, on Monday, the city closed the lake for approximately one year to, in order to perform the major overhaul of the park. And on March 13th, we will have a groundbreaking at 10:00 AM. And please, anybody that wants to attend, please join us on that day for the groundbreaking of our new lake project. So, that's it, Mayor. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Councilmember Ortiz, did you want to make a comment?
Thank you, City Manager. Really appreciate it. I just want to make sure that the community heard our city manager in the survey for our next city manager search. This is an extremely important component. I know that as a resident and then as council, I really appreciate my colleagues putting this out there, because what you want in a city manager is important to us. And so, please, I'm gonna post this on my Facebook, my Instagram, social media, anybody that can share this, get this out, and do it as quickly as possible so that we can start building the type of criteria as we prepare, and we're getting that feedback. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Any other comments? Seeing none. Thank you, Mr. City Manager, for the update. We will now move on to public comments. At this time, public comments will be heard for items on the open session and items not on the agenda. To address the city clerk, everyone must complete a speaker card and provide it to the city clerk. Only those speaker cards turned into the city clerk will be allowed to address the city council. No late cards will be accepted. Each person should state their name for the record. Once again, if you require Spanish interpretation, we do have an interpreter on site. Please raise your hand at this time if you do need interpreting assistance. In addition, we have interpreting listening devices available in the back. En este momento se escucharán los comentarios públicos para artículos de la agenda y artículos que no están en la agenda. Para dirigirse al consejo municipal, cada individuo debe completar una tarjeta de orador. Se debe completar la tarjeta de orador y entregarla a la secretaria municipal en este momento. Solo aquellas tarjetas de orador entregadas a la secretaria municipal podrán dirigirse al consejo municipal. No se aceptarán tarjetas tardías. Cada persona debe indicar su nombre para el registro. Si necesita interpretación en español, tenemos un intérprete presente. Por favor levante la mano en este momento para indicar que requiere servicios. También tenemos aparatos disponibles para escuchar la junta en español. Thank you. Gracias. We have 27 speakers tonight. Madam City Clerk?
Eric.
And each speaker will have three minutes.
Eric Marquez, Al Palazo, Mike Hartley, Kim Calvin, Georgia L., Luis Ojeda, Richard Mendoza, Sandra Salazar, Lilo Sherwood.
Thank you. If you hear a name, please start lining up behind the podium, and then as you get to the podium, please state your name. Thank you. Please begin.
Al Palazo. For 50 years, I've had a dream, a vision for rebuilding San Bernardino. I've taken nearly 100 prominent citizens in this community on a vision tour. I want to be considered for your next city manager. I know I can transform this city. Currently, I am advising Mr. Lee, who has the old Fox Theater, on reinventing that property and five other major buildings surrounding it. I have told him I will not accept any money. I have told him I will not accept any money. I want to fill the void in the downtown. I want to create a downtown within the downtown, a destination better than the Mission Inn. That's just one project. I have ideas for the Harris Company to rebuild the old Carousel Mall site and create shops on Fifth Street that I will call our Fifth Avenue. Some of the ideas I have shared with Mr. Lee is that the old Fox Theater can be for concerts, orchestras, performing arts, diverse international shows, dances of every type, receptions, parties, anniversaries, arena sporting events, circuses, ice skating, restaurants, fine dining, international cuisine, family restaurants, food court, buffets, outdoor seating, a beautiful square, a lounge, a nightclub for musicians, and so forth. It also could be an extension to a hotel, mini-convention space for meetings, seminars, for community organizations, educational institutions, graduations, and art exhibits. In the next, every two weeks, you know you will see me here, and I will share, in the three minutes that I have, ideas on how we can create economic opportunity for the people in San Bernardino. That's my primary focus, to raise them, to improve their lives, and in doing that, improve this city without government money, because there's only so much government money. After I share my ideas, I will conduct workshops. If I were City Manager, the first workshop would be for the staff, for the policymakers, elected officials, because we have to be united as a city on what our vision is, and then we will take those ideas to the community and explain to them how we can make their lives better.
Thank you.
I don't have any more time.
Thank you. Next speaker, please state your name.
Good evening, Council. My name is Georgia. Funny, there's a nice article out in the local news about all the corruption in this city. I'm shocked. No wonder the animals are suffering and dying and starving to death and fighting over food. One cup of food a day. Really, Chris, don't shake your head. They're starving. No sedation before euthanasia. We are the most inhumane city-run shelter in Southern California. You should all be proud of yourselves. I've been telling you about what's been happening in this facility for years, and you ignore me, okay? Don't sit there and act like, oh, I don't know, you deserve to be sued. I think it's disgusting, and I come here to tell you how disgusting you are, because you do nothing but sit there and laugh and talk and do absolutely nothing. 26 dogs were rescued out of the wash, Chris, by the community, okay? No help from the city, even though you guys get all the money. You don't help the citizens even though you manage intake. You don't bring the animals into the facility, you don't accept owner surrenders, you also dump animals back onto the streets. Ain't that right, Chris? That's against the law, by the way. Penal Code 597-S, you can look it up yourselves. And that's what she's doing, and that's what you're allowing her to do. And it needs to stop. And I'm going to come here and remind you to stop it every time you have a meeting until it stops. I won't stop, okay? I'm asking that you, the Council, ration food for people in the community that are feeding all the cats and dogs left to the street by this department, okay? There's no help for the community. You guys are taping all the money for yourselves. Treasure, I know you said you like Chris because she brings lots of money to the city. That money belongs to the animals. It doesn't belong to the city's funds. It needs to go back to the animals, and we need to treat them humanely, okay? What you're doing is wrong. It's wrong. That money belongs to the community and the dogs and cats and animals in our community, all right? Please, do something. And I hope everyone that's corrupt gets arrested, especially BB&amp;K. Get the hell out of our city.
Thank you. Next speaker, please state your name.
I am Eric Marquez, and it's a pleasure to speak before all of you today. I'm sorry for my messy hair, but unfortunately, I just don't have the hairline like some men to be confident enough to wear hair gel or a ponytail. But enough about my hair. I would like to talk about accountability today. Our city charter and government is a simple one, a city council and mayor that oversee a city manager that manages a city government. But unfortunately, it also makes our council unaccountable to its citizens with an appointed city attorney who just defends our elected officials in court and pays out of city coffers for their lawsuits rather than leaving it to them. So I think I would recommend having the city charter committee convene, because I've met many people who don't even know they're representative on the city council, but they always blame the mayor for everything going wrong when she can do nothing but watch them vote, which is unfortunate. And I've heard people say that they want an elected city manager. Isn't that silly? Because city governments usually have one, it's called a mayor, that manages the city government. So I think we should have a city charter that has an elected attorney to keep elected officials accountable, and an empowered city mayor that can actually do something to, well, manage the city and govern. Okay, now I'm going to talk about my cat. Her name's Luna Frederick Erickson, and I do think I'm better than all of you because I have a cat, and that is just a fact. I do think that. I believe every single word I say, and that's just one of the many reasons I probably think I'm better than you. And also, my community garden, it needs maintenance. It's on the corner of Pedley Drive and Sixth Street. They're going to build a homeless shelter there, which I'm not against, but I waited for three years for a lot in that community garden, and I think it should be expanded. And there's plenty of lots available. And I'm not saying we should use the one being used for the homeless shelter, but it's literally right next to it. But find space somewhere, please. And also, the plumbing needs work, I think. Also, there's an April Potluck, I think.
Thank you.
That's my time.
Thank you. Next speaker, please state your name.
Hello? Okay. How many times has San Bernardino went bankruptcy? Can you tell me, anyone, you tell me once? And that was a big one, wasn't it? Big. Are any of those people still here? Pardon me? On the end? The guy that's looking at me all like he's mad at me. I'm just bringing up questions, brother. Come on, work with me, all right? Work with me on this. Yeah, you know, I got a problem. I live over there by the Rock Church, okay? And it seems to me like I've called code enforcement, my neighbors have called code enforcement, and nothing gets taken care of. And it's like a truck, a truck, you know, place where they could sell trucks at or whatever. I have pictures I'd like to show you guys, these pictures. Should I give it to you, or somebody come down and get it?
The staff can take that from you. Sir, what's your name?
Oh, you don't want to look at it here? You don't want to pass it out while you're sitting here and I'm talking to you?
No worries, the staff will get that information. And your name, sir?
My name is Richard.
Okay, thank you, Richard.
I was hoping that you would look at the pictures, and then you would be able to understand what I'm talking about, okay? There's so much dust over there. This gentleman, I've had to help him because he gets clogged up from all the dust that's over there. The trucks that are in that neighborhood, that area, it's only three streets. Three streets, and none of it is zoned, while one street is zoned for it, one street. But nothing is really being done. You guys, you know, I mean, guy's got 30 trucks on a lot, and this guy's making money off of those trucks at $400 a truck and trailer, and there's no revenue. He doesn't pay you guys no taxes, no nothing. What's going on with that? That's money, that's revenue you guys should be collecting, and you're not. You're looking at me like I'm a sick person, but really, to tell you the truth, people are going to get mad, and there's not that many people in here. I'm surprised. I'm surprised. People are going to get mad, and pretty soon, they're going to get together, and they're going to say, you know what? You guys can't do your job? Let's get them out of here. Okay? This is the first time I came to this kind of a meeting. I didn't even know there was meetings like this, but then I must have been in ozone land or something, because nobody really told me about this stuff till I found out about it, until this gentleman right here, my neighbor, told me about things going on at City Hall. And then you, Mike, you know, other neighbors that I got. But there needs to be something down there. Code enforcement needs to come down there and look, because you got people building stuff.
Thank you, sir.
And it's wrong.
Thank you.
Real quick, sir, are you talking about Caroline and...
There you go.
Okay, well, that's where I used to live, so absolutely understand the problem, and I will follow up with the City Manager on that area.
Yeah, Dr. Romo.
Oh, perfect.
The code enforcement guy, but he can't do nothing.
Thank you. Next speaker, please state your name.
My name is Sandra Daniela Salazar Cifuentes. First, I want to thank God for allowing me to express my gratitude for the opportunity to speak today on behalf of my children and myself. I must state that I believe the current administration of this city is leading us towards financial ruin. I have personally experienced the corruption within San Bernardino County, particularly following the death of my children's father, Joseph Manning Slater, which was caused by an officer whose identity was initially concealed. Unbeknownst to me, San Bernardino County orchestrated for me to file a lawsuit on Joseph's behalf, only to later discover that the instigator was affiliated with your own department. The subsequent lawsuit resulted in a mere paid leave for the officer involved, an outcome I consider profoundly unjust. Now, with a clear understanding of the situation, it appears my children are being targeted because of their entitlement to certain funds. CPS, aka Child Predator Service, had intervened dismantling my family seemingly as a part of a calculated plan to gain control of their financial assets. I am here to declare that neither I nor my children will tolerate this. I demand that you remove them from any programs intended to exploit their resources. We will not be your piggy banks. The operational procedures of your courts are deeply concerning and appear to involve corrupt practices and miscarriages of justice. This is the final opportunity to rectify this issue by identifying and disclosing the involved in illicit schemes. You may do so anonymously. If you choose not to act, be aware that external legal actions is imminent. Targeting individuals within the Board of Supervisors and relating departments, including CPS, San Bernardino Court, Social Security, IHSS, Medical Services, and unemployment and tax agencies. Furthermore, a lawsuit orientating outside of San Bernardino will be filed alleging that your court has improperly designated me as an ex parte in relations to my previous case. That's it.
So I got to say? Thank you. Next speaker, please state your name.
Hello, my name is Luis Ojeda. Good evening, everyone. Interim City Manager, I don't know if I should congratulate you or feel sorry for you. You're taking a very risky move here. But anyways, one thing that I would advise you to do in how many months you're going to be here, why don't we just get a general plan done? Because it's been going on for, what, 20 years, 16 years? And we always talk about it, but it never gets done. And everybody keeps talking about recalling people, corruption. Okay, that's fine, but I feel if we don't have a general plan to guide our city to move forward, I think we're always going to just be wandering around, just thinking, oh, what can we do? What should we do? So let's remember, I've been telling this council and the people of the city of San Bernardino that these chambers are like a little club. There's always the same people, there's always the same complaints, there's always the same accusation. And in the last, what, seven years, I haven't seen anyone going to jail for corruption yet, right? So that means two things. One is that people just make stuff up to get, you know, to be a protagonist, or two, that everybody's in it and everybody's covering each other. So it's one of the two, right? So, but it's seven, eight years that I've been doing this, it hasn't happened yet? So I wonder, I wonder, if people just want to have a talking point, I just want to be protagonist. So I feel that of all of the issues that we have in this city, the general plan is the most important one, okay? Because on the last meeting that I came, you know, the last interim City Manager and some of the council members were feeling very optimist and happy about the homeless not being in the parks no more. Have you checked the city? Have you checked the downtown by the second and Arrowhead full of homeless? Why do we allow that? Why? Well, maybe because we have over 4,000 nonprofits in the city, that they're profiting with misery when we have special interests, that they profit from misery. So we need to stop supporting that. I know that a lot of people care about the homeless. No, they don't. They care about milking the system, because year over year, more money is spent in the homeless issue, and there's more homeless, and there's more money that's been spent on the problem, and nothing gets done. So, thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please state your name.
Madam Mayor, Councilmembers, and fellow community members, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak today. My name is Lilo Sherwood, and I'm here to address, thank you, and I'm here to address a serious issue with our local animal shelter, one that I personally experienced and said I believe requires immediate attention. A few months ago, I adopted a dog from our shelter, excited to give her a loving home. What I did not know, and what no one at the shelter informed me about, was that she was pregnant. Soon, I found myself responsible not just for one dog, but eight newborn puppies, each needing medical care, proper nutrition, and a safe environment to thrive. The cost time and effort required to raise them were overwhelming. I turned to the shelter for guidance, expecting some level of support and compassion, but instead, I was met with indifference. The staff was neither helpful nor understanding, and I was essentially left to navigate the situation alone. Had I been a veterinarian or even trained vet tech on staff, this pregnancy could have been identified before adoption, and I could have been... could have been identified before adoption and I could have been given the information needed to make an informed decision. Instead, I was blindsided, forced to bear the full weight of the situation that could have been avoided with proper medical attention at intake. In fact, I believed all dogs were given a medical evaluation before released for adoption. And this isn't just about me. This is happening to other adopters and to countless animals who pass through our shelter doors. Right now, our shelter is operating without the most essential resource for animal welfare, proper veterinarian care. But I do have to correct myself. When I wrote this, I had not heard that at this moment, the shelter actually has part-time veterinarian care, which made me very happy. However, it is only the beginning. I urge you to get a full-time veterinarian doctor or tech at the shelter at your earliest convenience. You can prioritize funding for full-time veterinarians at our shelter versus through city funding, grants or partnerships with local veterinary schools. There are solutions. We cannot continue to allow animals and adopters to fall through the cracks due to a lack of proper medical care and oversight.
Thank you. Thank you so, so much. Next speaker, please state your name.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council and members of the public. My name is Jose Mendoza and I'm honored to serve as a commander for the Disabled American Veterans, Chapter Twelve in San Bernardino, California. I stand before you tonight with great news about our continued commitment to serving our veterans and our community. This March, DAV Chapter Twelve is hosting three impactful events that will uplift and support our veterans and community. All this information can be found on our website at davchapter12california.org. On March thirteenth, we are hosting a Veterans Benefits Seminar, a critical opportunity for veterans to learn about the benefits that they have earned through their service. On this same day, we'll assist veterans with filing their claims, working alongside our national service officers to ensure that they receive the support that they deserve. Another act of service, we are partnering up with Haven to distribute sixty bags of medical cannabis to our disabled veterans. This event will take place at Haven, San Bernardino, location at eleven AM to one PM. Veterans must have their military ID, medical cannabis recommendation, and a valid driver's license to participate. Coffee refreshments will be provided and a service officer will be on site to assist veterans with their benefits and claims. On March twenty eighth, we are deeply honored to partner with Congressman Peter Aguilar and the Inland Empire Military Museum. In attendance will be our DAV National Commander, Dan Contreras, for the fiftieth and final Welcome Home Vietnam Veterans Congressional Penning Ceremony. A historic moment of gratitude for those who have served, on the same day, the museum will unveil a new exhibit honoring women veterans, ensuring that their legacy is preserved and celebrated. Free tacos will be served to all that attend, along with local access to local veteran resources. This is our final year of this momentous event, so let's come together and make it unforgettable. At DAV Chapter Twelve, forgive me, at DAV Chapter Twelve, our mission does not end with these events. We are here year round to serve our veterans. Our office is located at twenty-five zero-one Pacific Street, San Bernardino, California, and we are open Tuesdays and Thursdays from eight AM to four PM. And for those who miss our March thirteenth seminar, a certified service officer is available every Thursday to assist with your benefits and claims. In closing, our veterans have sacrificed so much for us. It is our duty, our privilege, and our honor to give back to them. Not just today, not just this month, but always. Together, we are building a stronger, more compassionate community, one that never forgets the sacrifices of those who wore the uniform. Thank you, Mayor, City Council and the public. Let's continue to stand for those who stood for us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Marcus Sims, Dolores Armstead, Christian Shaughnessy, Fred Lewis, Ray Blum, Sharon Negretti, Lydia Savala, Ben Pratt, Arthur Anderson, Alan Stanley.
Good evening. My name is Marcus Aces Sims, father and ex-veteran of US Navy, um, that are missing five children in CFS from Victorville, California. Uh, uh, pretty much contacted everyone, the FBI, Attorney General, uh, San Bernardino Police Department, the sheriffs and all this. And they all gave me the same thing, did you talk to your, uh, social worker? Well, I haven't talked to my social worker in about two years. Not because I'm not calling every fucking day, but I got five posthumous children, meaning I passed away in ninety-one. And I'm gonna touch on a couple of things. I'm the one to make the phone call about the thirty-nine million or whatever. That's not gonna happen because the extortion that y'all are doing is fucking pathetic. I mean, it's fucking pathetic. My children's been gone from my home for four fucking years off of general neglect allegations. And I just get a letter today, hey, Mr. Sims, you can, you can come into the court, you know what I'm saying, and talk. Judge Anne Marie Pace, last time I went in there, she goes, now, mind me, my lawyer, uh, Pueblo Castro stopped. He just stopped. I said, Castro, if you don't, if you don't tell this judge what's really going on, I told him to take his ass in there and fire his fucking self. You know why? Because right over on the other side, the children's mother with her counsel was saying, how do you feel if we say he's a sexual violent predator? I wouldn't have known, I wouldn't even heard it if I didn't have my earpieces in and my recorder on and I played it to him. And he was like, I said, man, what you gonna do? What, what is this about? This judge is playing Judge, Jury and Executer. And here it is, four years, four years later. Two years, I haven't seen my children. Two years. Four Christmases, four Thanksgivings, four birthdays. My little baby girl was three years old. I haven't seen her. She's seven now. Now, what's really going on? I know that, uh, which comes that came up, uh, on the, uh, agenda, that AM, uh,
Thank you, sir.
twenty-one dash whatever.
Thank you, sir.
That Ro Don was trying to, uh, pass through.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Thank you, sir.
My telephone number is nine oh nine, four oh two, sixty thirty-eight.
Thank you. Next speaker, please state your name.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council and residents of San Bernardino. My name is Ray Blum. I'm a lifelong resident of San Bernardino. I'm a property owner. In twenty-twenty, I moved my businesses to the city. Um, I recently acquired a business in the downtown San Bernardino area. And, uh, in the past, I volunteered with the Neighborhood Association up in Verdmont where I reside, under, um, the council, the city coun, um, the Neighborhood Association Council. Um, I felt a need to step up and serve our city. I know there's a lot of, um, hurting people. I know there's a lot of, um, need in our city. So I've agreed to become the president of the San Bernardino Neighborhood Association in downtown San Bernardino. Um, we're gonna host an event on March twentieth in downtown San Bernardino at three-twenty Northeast Street. It's, I'm inviting leadership from our faith-based community, our government, businesses and residents. Our only agenda at this point with our group of board and volunteers that have been able to secure and commit to this is to start cleaning up, um, and to listen, connect and listen to leadership and our businesses and see what the greatest needs are. So I'm hoping that we can get a turnout that night of people that care about the community, our leaders, and just start to collaborate and sit across the table and see how we can start to change it. So thank you for the time this night and thank you for taking the time to listen.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Next speaker, please state your name.
Dolores Armstead. First, did all of you see the news, the IECN news article today? All you can say is damn. The previous city manager, Rochelle Clayton, really exposed all of you, especially the mayor and the previous council, council people, not the new council people. All of you decided an honest city manager does not work for you. You now have another interim city manager. Are you on the hunt for the most corrupt city manager because you're using the same search people so that we can be sued again? You keep firing the honest ones. What is your next step? How many city managers are you going to rotate? The city is already at the bottom and we have paid millions of dollars for the terminations. First, we in the community pray that you remove the current city, um, contracted attorney. Why is it that at every city meeting, there seems to be more than four lawsuits that we have to pay out? The corruption of the mayor and the previous city council, this attorney continues to take the city to the bottom. The city has already been named as the worst, most unsafe, worst governed cities in the state. And are you guys proud of it? Because we hold the title. The only one making money seems to be the city attorney, maybe Councilman Sanchez. I am tired of seeing my tax dollars paying for attorney's fees with no end in sight. People, read the news. It is blatant. There is no credibility with these, the attorney that the city has hired and definitely the JL Group. Even Charette stated that in the article. You were there. What is the update on OXPO? All the permits have expired. It is time to clean it up because our residents continue to get sick from the toxics. We deserve answers. Just because something hazardous was allowed previously does not mean we need to continue it and that people want to see it continued. What is your plan? As stated earlier, trucks are illegal, well, wasn't yet, trucks are being illegally parked. And Councilmember Canot, what are you doing to help us? Flores, Ward Six, we have an OXPO in Ward Six that received a hundred and sixty-seven citations and nothing's been done. They're still there. We need that taken care of. Then finally, what about the downtown revitalization? We are behind. We are a joke. We're losing money. A strategic plan, our general plan, we ask for it at every city meeting. We need it for us to go forward. Please help us. Thank you. Oh, and thank you for item number ten.
Thank you. Next speaker, please state your name.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, brothers, sisters, members of the council or mayor. My name is Christian T. Shaughnessy and the question of honor is often a very pertinent and relevant one in our society, especially amid so many corruption allegations and instances of that corruption. And so accordingly, I think that one of the most undervalued honors that a human being can have in this society is to bear the title of whistleblower. And even if, and even if, I embarrass her just a bit, I just want to salute the courage of Rochelle Clayton for coming on down today, even though she no longer works for the city. Let's give her a round of applause because she deserves it. We need to ensure that we never again have issues like what happened to Rochelle Clayton take place in our city. We need to do whatever we can. And if we don't stop those things, we see again and again and again, basic problems with our services, basic problems with how the city communicates to people, basic problems with how the city works with nonprofits. It demoralizes us. We can and we will do better. And I'm speaking from this on a very personal basis because last Sunday, my car hit a pothole over on Fifth Street, right across from ten-sixty-six Fifth Street, that is in Ward One. This pothole, for the people who can't see it, looks like it could have been in Gaza, Syria, or any other country where bombings happen. Take a look at this. My car suffered over three thousand dollars worth of damages from that one pothole. And if there are people who are thinking, Christian is just being political, he's making this up, I brought my receipts. I brought the pictures of the pothole and I brought the estimates of my car and how much money is gonna have to be spent to fix it. And so accordingly, I really, really want to give credit to Councilman Theodore Sanchez for taking so much great care of our infrastructure in the city. I have a gift for you right now. This is an award for you having the biggest potholes in the city of San Bernardino. And if you're wondering what all the zeros are there, that's a small fraction of the potholes that working class people hit. Because I'm somebody that works for a nonprofit and I only have so many savings, but there are people that make even less money than I do and they have the misfortune of living under you. And that man makes thirty-seven thousand five hundred dollars a year. He gets great medical benefits. He does not know the pain. He does not know the pain and suffering. And he has so much money, he takes people out to special Valentine's Day dinners. And that news will be coming out soon. So thank you so much. Let's recall this man. Let's replace him with somebody good. Let's go ahead and turn his nodding self into somebody that always has a sad face so that he stays away from our city. And let's make sure that we have a city that we love, a city that we care about, and let's have good city managers here that we can work with. Thank you so much. And I'll be giving this to you folks.
Next speaker, please state your name.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Ben Pratt. I'm the vice president of the IBW Local Four Seven Seven here in San Bernardino County. We're the Electricians' Union. Um, I'd like to speak in support for the ENA on our surplus land in Ward Six. Um, it's a small parcel, but, uh, it is, uh, government allocated land. So, um, I would like to see that, uh, hopefully some local higher standards are put in place when we build any projects like this. And, uh, most importantly, I would like to make sure that we're hiring ethical contractors that are abiding by apprenticeship standards that are required here in our state. Um, uh, I was able to walk up, uh, to a contractor doing lighting here in the city and it took me about thirty seconds to, to, to find violations of apprenticeship standards. It's not the city's, uh, job to, uh, police those things. So I, I'm, I'm not here to, to, uh, put that on you guys. But I will say that, uh, we can vet contractors better and look at past violations to make sure that they're not gonna get this city in a jam, whether it be with prevailing wage, compliance, things of that nature. Um, I'm planning on reaching out to, uh, Ken Chappa to kind of talk a little further about that. Ken's been a good friend to us. And, uh, uh, again, I'm just trying through these compliance efforts to protect the city going forward, especially as we get into larger projects. It's gonna be very important that we safeguard our projects from wage theft and things of that nature. Um, that's all I really got on that. And I would also just really quick, like to say that we had our Metropolitan Water District function last week. And I'd like to thank, uh, Dr. Ortiz, Mayor Tran and Councilman Flores for, uh, coming out. It was a good day. Um, I can't believe you guys allowed yourself to be electrocuted by us. Uh, that was fun. Thanks again for coming. And, uh, please keep our, our concerns in mind about the, uh, wage compliance, things like that. Thanks a lot.
Thank you. That was fun, being electrocuted a little bit. Next speaker, please state your name.
My name is Arthur Anderson, Executive Director of the People of San Bernardino. Um, ladies and gentlemen, um, City Council, Mayor, um, Councilman Sanchez specifically, and your financial supporters, wherever they are. Um, when I was growing up, um, Mount Vernon was a place that we all went to go cruise on. You know, it was a cruising street. We would cruise there, um, you know, every afternoon, uh, especially on Sundays when we would go to the Meadler Cafe or Amapola for, um, burritos and other things. Um, but nowadays, it's, it's, it's dismal on how it is, uh, maintained, you know? And I, I often wonder, would you drive your BMW on the streets around Mount Vernon? Because the residents there, as Christian had went through, damaged their cars on a regular basis. Coming out of the driveways, they have to merge their, their, down about a half a foot out onto the street. And that's what they typically tell me when I'm talking to them and getting signatures and other things. And I want to say, one rejection from the clerk's office is not gonna stop the recall. And I also heard behind closed doors that you thought of running for mayor. And I'm gonna make the case, uh, that I think that's crazy. Um, first off, no one in your word even knows your name. First off, no one in your word even knows your name. And about the recall, here's this objection. Why not wait two years instead of recalling Theodore? Well, I'll tell you why. The buildings are burning and the potholes are damaging our cars. We watch other cities prosper from all over the region and we still see the buildings burning. The recent news article on IECN highlights that behind the scenes, all the chaos and mismanagement that you're causing. And right now, Ward 1 is burning. And on July 4th and October 24th last year, the Harris Building burned. And only a few months before that, the Enterprise Building owner, Mr. Alan Stanley, was trying to purchase that building. And Theodore, you were against that purchase. And then the city took purchase. And I think you said something along the lines of, the city should own that building. And I have another burnt scar on my word every time we have one of these burning buildings. And I ask, who's the one who benefits behind this? Who supports the man that allows the city to burn? And do they want the city to burn? And I know the reaction is going to be, what are you going to do next? And you're going to call a meeting, but that's not going to work anymore. And I want to say something that your former mentor said. He said, you learned the good ropes from him and that is your giant to fight. Well, the people of San Bernardino are that giant. And we're starting this fight and we're going to finish it. If you want to join us, come to our website, peopleofSanBernardino.com. Tagline on Facebook and Instagram, thepeopleofSanBernardino.com. And we are the giant that will crush you. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please state your name.
My name is Alan Stanley, owner of the Enterprise Building in downtown San Bernardino for seven years. When we came here in 2017, the city was still in bankruptcy. I remember it. Those were very dark days. That's when he came in, Theodore Sanchez. Six years later, he had the epiphany. If you give a homeless person a hotel voucher and they go to the hotel and it expires in two weeks, they're homeless again. My God, six years, rock on. I've been here seven years. Same parking structure, potholes. I have filled 29 potholes in that parking structure. Me. On my dime. I witnessed four fires in the Werworth Building. 33 fires in the Carousel Mall. Five fires in the Harris Building. Because you take such great care of Ward 1 and our historic buildings. Muzzle tough. You are our elected officials. You are our representatives. I welcome our new city councilmen and women. And I celebrate our women, Women's Month. Thank you guys for serving. Please make better decisions than this man. Yesterday, we received our fifth rescue dog at the Enterprise Building. Five-month-old puppy curled up, shivering at our doorstep. Big sign down at the shelter. If you leave a dog here, it will immediately be euthanized. What? We're better than that. The city spends over $200 million a year.
Thank you. Next speaker, please state your name.
Lydia Savala, here to discuss animal welfare. I know you hear, when people come to address, the Department of Animal Services is never a popular department in any city. And in this city, when people discuss euthanasia, they're discussing the effect. It is the symptom of the dysfunction fundamentally and fiscal dysfunction. I say fiscally dysfunctional because there is no shortage of grant money in the city, specifically for animal services. I have a list totaling $3.2 million, which includes, of course, the $1.1 million for the veterinary mobile clinic, the $1.5 million for improvements to the city, which included the $300,000, $100,000 a year for three years. And I have for you a package, I have a package for all of you here that includes the Page 1 of 10 pages of the Restricted Grant Agreement with the San Manuel Band of Indians and Attachment A, which states that 1,000 animals will be altered through the spay-neuter assistance program for the community. Pet owners can have their animals altered, reducing unwanted litters of puppies and kittens as well as stray and owner-surrendered animals. 1,000 animals will be altered annually through this program. How many were spayed and neutered through this program? None, because that money was spent on the shelter animals. So regardless of the amount of money that comes in, if you're not managing the budget, there's not going to be money to fulfill what I consider to be the perfect plan. I thank Dr. Ortiz for inviting me to take the tour of the shelter, the van, we got to see the mobile van, and it needs to be deployed, like really deployed, not just for vaccines and microchips. The dysfunction includes, I believe that the linchpin of dysfunction starts by not having a relief veterinarian that does nothing other than spay-neuter every single day towards 1, 2, 3. Get that mobile van into the community. That's what you agreed to do. And I do not understand, Chris, why, why do we refuse to utilize a relief vet? We've got dogs leaving the shelter pregnant, for God's sake.
Thank you. Next speaker, please state your name.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. My name is Fred Lewis and I just finished six months as the interim Assistant City Manager for San Bernardino. I would like to thank all the city employees for their hard work and dedication during my time with the city. They have worked to ensure that citizens' concerns were addressed and the multitude of projects the city has going on continue to move forward. I especially want to thank William Lampy, Senior Management Analyst, and Corey Hodges, Assistant to the City Manager, for their support. They are both outstanding employees and made my workdays run much more smoothly. It can't be emphasized enough that all the employees of the city are trying to do their best, but they are struggling due to the high turnover rate of leadership at the city. Constant changes in city managers and department heads does not provide for a stable work environment, and the city council is directly responsible for this problem. Every time you fire a city manager, you create instability. Every time you fight on the dais and attack and disparage each other, you create instability. And employees need stability in order to stay focused and perform to their highest potential. Employees are leaving San Bernardino and going to work for other cities that provide them with that stable work environment. This exodus is at every level of the organization. This creates operational problems because institutional knowledge is non-existent at the city. You have departments that are failing to complete required functions with the state and feds because no one in the department knew that it was required. This is because the employee responsible for performing the function quit. And due to the high turnover rate and lack of institutional knowledge, no one else in the department knew that the requirement even existed. The city council must create a more stable and cohesive environment in order for the city to move forward. However, there is one other change that must be made before the city can start that journey. The city council must replace the current city attorney. The current city attorney is vindictive, malicious, and a liar. She has created a hostile work environment throughout the city. She is a cancer that must be cut out before she infects the entire city. I know that each council member truly wants to do what is right for the city of San Bernardino. And I believe in your hearts, you know exactly what you must do to make San Bernardino a truly great place for everyone to live their best life, work to their highest potential, and enjoy the many wonderful activities that San Bernardino has to offer. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please state your name.
Hello, I'm Sharon Negretti. I'm here today to say, what goes around comes around. The truth will always come to light. I want to express my profound disappointment and frankly anger regarding the current state of affairs within our city government. Recent events, while I won't delve into specifics, have laid bare a pattern of deceit and a blatant disregard for the principles of ethical conduct. Make no mistake, those who operate in the shadows, who prioritize self-interest over the well-being of our community and animals, will be exposed. Like I said, the truth inevitably finds its way to the light. The issues at the animal shelter are only the tip of the iceberg. The situation, this situation highlights a systematic problem, a persuasive lack of oversight and accountability that permeates various city departments. This negligence is unacceptable and demands immediate action. I urge you, council, to conduct a thorough, transparent, and unbiased investigation into these matters. Empty platitudes and superficial gestures will not suffice. We need concrete, decisive action to address the rot that has taken hold of this city. The public's trust has been eroded and it's your responsibility to restore it. Anything less is a betrayal of the oath you swore to. Your inaction is actively damaging the fabric of the community and enabling further misconduct. I posted a, something on Nextdoor asking the city, asking for neighbors to tell me what's, whether anything they've noticed has gone on in the city with the mayor, anything at all? 55 people, not one could give me one thing that you guys have ever done. Thank you.
Thank you.
Adams, Adam Snow, Claudia Casillas, Richard Casillas, Robert Carrillo, Renee Saritos.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I thought that December 18th would have been my most toughest public statement, but I was wrong. Tonight is my most toughest public statement. While reading the IECN article today, was I surprised or shocked with any of that information placed in that article? No, I was not. Why? Because I lived through four years. Four years, Councilman Sanchez. Four years, Councilman Charette. Four years, Councilwoman Ibarra. Four years, Councilmember Figueroa. Four years, Councilmember Alexander. Four years, Councilmember Reynoso. We were all witnesses to what was taking place. Our former city manager Clayton just happened to be the one who was bold enough to state what is happening in our city. And that's because you weren't wanting to listen to colleagues. You weren't wanting to listen because you were the culpable ones. You were the ones who was actively engaging with the city attorney's office. Matter of fact, where is the city attorney? It's about five meetings that the city attorney has been missing. Where's Assistant City Attorney Thomas Rice? Well, we know that two former city managers said that he was leaking out of closed session and asked that he not be present at any council meetings any longer, and that is on record. Where is Attorney Baltimore? I know his name is heavily listed in the article. Doesn't the city and its members deserve an explanation as to where they are when they are not in place while earning salary from the city of San Bernardino? Yes, we do. But I imagine it must be something else that is taking place as to why they are not here and why now the city clerk isn't here either. The city of San Bernardino deserves so much better, and that is what I consistently said on this dais. I consistently said it to my colleagues. But in the words of Councilmember Sanchez, stability, stability, stability. This city has never had any and nor will it ever get any. In the words of Councilmember Charette, when we had to discover that it was we, that we may need to discuss why and tell the city why we were not going to get our downtown, what did you say? Dance around the question. It's what I've been doing for 14, 16 years. And I told you, I don't dance around the questions. I don't dance around community. I dance with community.
Thank you.
Recall Councilmember Charette and Councilmember Sanchez immediately and remove BB&amp;K now.
Thank you.
Otherwise, you're all culpable. Going forward, new council members or not, you are now all culpable of what takes place going forward in this city. You will not be able to hide behind closed session any longer.
Thank you. Any more speakers, Mad City Clerk?
Adam Snow, Claudia Casillas, Richard Casillas, Robert Carrillo, sorry, and Renee Saritos.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening, Mayor, Council. My name is Robert Carrillo. I am a resident of San Bernardino, Ward 7, a business owner in Ward 2, and a director of the Launchpad Collective, which is a nonprofit dedicated to addressing San Bernardino's housing and economic needs. And I really did not want to come and speak after that, so I apologize that I came up. But this is regarding Agenda Item Number 10, and so it is just to say that I fully support the development of affordable housing in San Bernardino. We need it, of course. We want it. And I support all new housing across all income levels, especially the much-needed homes that Jamboree is proposing. I would like some clarity, though, regarding the home funds that are mentioned in the exclusive negotiating agreement. And this is just clarifying, you know, clarifying questions, I think, for the benefit of the public. Could someone at the time explain how home funding works? How much home funding is available to the city? How much is being allocated to this project? Currently, there is a Home NOFA that is due in May of this year, and so wondering whether this project has those home funds already as part of it, just, you know, how those are going to be allocated? And then how those home funds are then selected to be given to different organizations, whether that's through an RFP or just through private discussions, which is fine. I'm not saying anything about that. I just like some clarity around it. And then I think, yeah, I think that's about it. I really do appreciate the city's ongoing efforts to bring housing to San Bernardino. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you. And I believe staff could mention it during discussion, that's an item for our discussion, so we could answer some of those questions during that time. Thank you so much. I believe that's all of our public comments.
There's no more speakers.
I'd like, if council wouldn't mind, we do have our folks here, Daphne. She's here, so I would like to do the presentation, if that's okay with the council, if we can all come to the front. And Daphne, come on up. We'd like to present a proclamation for Women's History Month in the city of San Bernardino, March 2025, presenting to Daphne Hawkins with the Love Program.
Hello? Can everyone hear me? Yes? Okay. So we have a proclamation of the Mayor and City Council proclaiming March 2025 as, oh, yes, Habi, please join on stage as well, as Women's History Month in the city of San Bernardino, whereas throughout history, women have played a vital role in shaping our society, making invaluable contributions to culture, politics, science, education, and business, often overcoming significant obstacles to achieve success. And whereas the city of San Bernardino recognizes the importance of Women's History Month as a time to honor the pioneering spirit and remarkable achievements of women who have paved the way for future generations. And whereas women in San Bernardino have been instrumental in striving positive change in our community, from advocating for equal rights to leading initiatives that promote economic growth, social ju, social, ha, social justice, and civic engagement. And whereas the city of San Bernardino celebrates the impactful work of the Love Program, a nonprofit dedicated to empowering at-risk young women of color through mentorship, leadership, development, and job readiness training, ensuring they have the support and resources needed to succeed. And whereas the Love Program has made significant strides in uplifting young women in the city of San Bernardino, fostering self-development, self-awareness, and career advancement, thereby strengthening the foundation of our community. And whereas the Love Program also leads a human trafficking task force that meets monthly in the city of San Bernardino, working to raise awareness, provide support to survivors, and combat exploitation in our community. And whereas the month of March is designated as Women's History Month, providing an opportunity to reflect on the progress made and to acknowledge the challenges that remain in the pursuit of gender equality and empowerment. And whereas we celebrate the diverse accomplishments of women in all fields and reaffirm our commitment to supporting policies and initiatives that uplift women and ensure they have access to opportunities that foster success. And now, therefore being resolved that the Mayor and the entire City Council of San Bernardino do here proclaim March 2025 as Women's History Month in the city of San Bernardino, and recognize the outstanding contribution of the Love Program in empowering young women, we encourage all citizens to support and celebrate the significant work being done to inspire and uplift future generations. Thank you so, so very much, Daphne. And to all the kids, there you go.
First, thank you, Mayor. Thank you to the entire City Council. I cannot do this work alone, so this isn't a Daphne award. This is all of our award, because it takes all of us to really combat human trafficking, teen pregnancy, and really getting our girls off of the streets, and really supporting and mentoring the next generation of leaders, in particular here in the city of San Bernardino. So I thank you all for your commitment, for your support in ensuring that this mission moves forward. I can't do this alone, and I, I will say this, I have an amazing staff, so just in case they're watching, because they're working right now to prepare some of our youth, they are amazing. I don't do this work, they do this work, and I do it, we do it all together. So thank you so much, and I want to say publicly, while my family is here, when I do this work, my house, I sacrifice the work at home. And I couldn't do this without my husband, Channing, really supporting me every step of the way, without my children just being a huge support in every step of the way, so I thank them as well, and I'm just honored and humbled.
Thank you, and thank you to all the men who support all the women. Thank you so much. All right, quick picture?
Yes. Love Program. Thank you. All right, we will now move on to, what's next? We are moving on to consent, right? Consent calendar? Yes, Mr. City Manager.
Yes, Mayor, Members of the City Council, we'd like to pull Item Number Two, the $600,000 item for the Rapid Re-Housing Services. Needs a little more work, and we'll return at a later date and bring this back to the City Council. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Now, Council, do you have any pulls? Seeing none.
Move the balance.
There's a motion, there's a second. Motion by Councilmember Charette and a second by Councilmember Ortiz. Madam City Clerk, please go to your screen and vote on the screen.
Mr. Gallardo, I just wanted to say thank you publicly. I did have a lot of questions on some items on the, on the agenda, and you and your staff were very responsive in getting that information back, so thank you for.
Thank you, Mayor Potem.
We can get business moving forward here. Thank you.
The motion passed unanimously. Thank you. Thank you, Council. We will now move on to Discussion Item. We have one Discussion Item, and that is Item Number Ten, Exclusive Negotiating Agreement, also known as ENA, with JHC Acquisitions LLC for the Development of Surplus Land Act Twelve, Land Act Site Twelve for Affordable Housing in the Sixth Ward. Could we begin with the staff's presentation?
Madam Mayor, Members of the City Council, before I begin a presentation, I'd like to introduce you to the, to the newest addition to our staff in the Community Open and Housing Department. Her name is Kristy Rollador. She joins us from the city of Riverside, and she's going to be our new Code Enforcement Manager, and Kristy is in the audience. Thank you. So on this item, Trina Perez, Housing Manager, is going to give a presentation. Thank you.
Does this work? Good evening, Mayor and Council. We're bringing to you today a recommendation to approve the Exclusive Negotiating Agreement, ENA, between the city and JHC, LLC, an affiliate of Jamboree Housing Corporation. Got you. Sorry, lost my place. For the, the development of 3.5 acres of city-owned surplus land known as Site Twelve for Affordable Housing. We're also asking to authorize a city manager, deputy city manager, designate to execute the ENA along with the subsequent amendments, extensions, or necessary documents to complete the transaction. The ENA will allow housing staff to negotiate key terms such as the donation of the land, the home funds that were mentioned during public comment, which requires subsovereign analysis, will work through the design, construction, operations. Once our due diligence is complete, we'll return to the Council to ask for approval for a DNA, a development disposition and agreement. The next is the site overview. Site Twelve consists of sixteen individual parcels totaling approximately 3.5 acres of surplus land. The blue parcel in the corner is privately owned and will not be part of the development. The green parcel in the middle is under negoti, Jamboree has made a connection as, and is working to negotiate purchasing of the land. At the time of the presentation, we did not have the appraisal price of the land. The appraisal has come in at 3.6 million approximately. The, the development is 101 units, two being, two phases, one managerial unit per phase. Eight will be for 30% AMI and below. The remainder of the units, the 91 units, will be 31% to 60% AMI. The next two slides are some potential, are the potential site plans and renderings. And there's that. Again, we're recommending approval of the, of the ENA with Jamboree Housing and asking for the city manager, deputy city manager, does he need to execute all the relevant documents necessary to facilitate the transaction? And we're open for questions.
Thank you so much for the presentation. This is great, great news for our city, especially for the Sixth Ward. I do have Councilmember Flores, followed by Councilmember Ortiz, to speak.
Thank you, Mayor. No, just to start off, I think this is such an incredible project that honestly, like, looking at it, this is a step in the right direction for the city of San Bernardino to have projects like these. I'm extremely excited and full of enthusiasm to see this project come into fruition, and I think that the benefit that it will not have, will have not only on the site itself, but the surrounding community is going to be substantial. Now, with that being said, I thank my colleagues for further support on this item to move this item forward, and, but then make a motion to move it, or it looks, or it looks like it's been moved already, but. Wow. Wow.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Ortiz?
Yes, we're so excited about the project. We're ready to move it. So I just really am excited about the foundation that this is creating in our city, especially a partnership with Jamboree. The, and I'm going to let City Manager Gallardo talk about his experience, but this is really one of these opportunities that allows us, when we look at the future of building and really the, the future of what true property management looks like for multi-unit housing. And what I love is that this creates more opportunities for more growth and for people, for hard-working people to be able to have quality homes to come to that, that are in the city of San Bernardino. Being priced out of the market is, is a real thing, and when homes, two-bedroom homes that are less than 800 square feet are going for half a million dollars, and you make 40,000, it, it doesn't, it, it isn't going to work, and prime mortgaging is, subprime mortgaging is out. So I, I would just, if you would, City Manager, please just speak to your experience with them.
Yes, I think you, Dr. Ortiz, in my prior agency, we had two projects that were built by Jamboree Housing, and these projects are critical that the after-construction onsite management be premier, and the two projects in my prior community were fantastically taken care of, if you will. We had no issues whatsoever, and when I just left, we had signed up a, a third project with Jamboree for some permanent supportive housing, and they are a good company, so I'm excited to hear that is coming to our city. Thank you.
And last, I want to thank Councilwoman Calvin. I know this was a pet project for her, and in carrying that forward, Councilman Flores, how, how much that you have continued to be a part of this and, and that you'll be able to see it through. I think that's the important thing about the transition is, although one may start, they may not see that finish, and so I really appreciate Councilwoman Flores' is, you know, wanting to take the ball and run with it on this.
Thank you. Any other speakers? Councilmember Canas?
Well, I just want to congratulate Councilmember Flores. This is an amazing project. We talk a lot about homelessness, but part of that conversation is homelessness prevention, and projects like this are instrumental in the discussion. So this is an absolutely amazing project that's coming to the city of San Bernardino. I am a self-proclaimed EMB. I welcome many housing opportunities in the city of San Bernardino, and I just want to thank the developers for choosing our city to do this project. I did a lot of research on Jamboree in my capacity as a senior field representative for the county. I had the experience to see projects like this come to fruition and how they transform communities. So I'm very proud that we are going to be a recipient of one of these projects here in San Bernardino, so thank you, and thank the staff for all your hard work in bringing this to us, so thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mayor Potem?
Sure, I, I'll, I'll remove my motion so that the council member from the district can actually make the, the motion. My apologies, sir.
Thank you. With the motion second? I think you're, on the records, it says show that you're second ready, so please cash your votes, and it looks already it's passed, right? So congratulations to the city of San Bernardino, especially to Ward Six, and thank you, Council. Moving right along, we are now going to Mayor and Council Updates. Councilmember Canas?
So I just want to say I am hosting, finally, for my ward, my first community meeting. It will be held on March 20th at Los Tacos Locos, which is located at 5244 University Parkway. I'm super excited. It's going to be information-packed. The topic is going to be about safety, which is a big concern, especially in the north end of San Bernardino. We just experienced the Edge Hill Fire, also with a lot of the development that is coming. This is going to be a very fruitful discussion. We do have our San Bernardino Police Chief that's joining, as well as San Bernardino County Fire. They're bringing out the whole team from the Wildland Division, their Planning Division, the Assistant Fire Marshal, as well as our very own Assistant Fire Chief. So I welcome all of the community to join. Again, that's going to be March 20th at 6:00 PM at Los Tacos Locos. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Sanchez?
Our hometown hero, Terry Washington, will be fighting this weekend. That's March 8th, and that will be in Pomona. Purchase your tickets at tix.com, T-I-X dot com. Let's all get out there and show support for our local hometown professional boxer. He had his first professional boxing match late, late last year, and I will say that it was probably one of the best, if not the best knockout of the year, and he will outshine that, I'm sure, with his work ethic and his incredible talent. He will outshine that this and this next match he's having. So go out and support. Again, it's in Pomona on Saturday. Tix.com, T-I-X dot com. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Ortiz?
Yes, I attended the Central Valley Regional Steering Committee meeting today, and that's where all the different cities get to sit with their representatives and talk about the good things that we are doing with homelessness, and so the project that we just supported for the workforce affordable housing is big. We are moving forward with our Navigation Center, and we'll be able to provide at some point an update on that. Although this isn't, it isn't a public meeting, the, the Ad hoc Committee meeting for the, the Council is meeting tomorrow, so we are staying dedicated to those efforts. Tomorrow night at 6:30, I will be attending the Arrowhead, Arrowhead Community Builders, dang it, it's my neighborhood, too. I think it's, it's the Community Builders Neighborhood Association tomorrow at the First Congregational Church off of Sierra Way and 30th, and then there's a bunch of other stuff, and just, I'll post it on Facebook because I can't remember what it was, but tomorrow night I'll be at the neighborhood meeting.
Thank you. Mayor Potem Figueroa? Okay, thank you, Mayor Potem. Councilmember Flores?
Thank you, Mayor. Last Wednesday, I attended the Kimbark Elementary School Career Day Tabling Event, so it was interesting going out there and seeing all these elementary school students dressed up as their career. I had a table there, had a few students come up and ask me what a council member is. I basically said...
I basically said, like, if you know what a mayor does, I'm just like, I do almost the exact same thing, but not really. On last Friday, I attended the Howard Ingram Morning High Five Mom Cheer, where you mom of, where I gave high five to elementary school students walking back to school. After that, went to the 12th Annual Pioneer Breakfast. I got an opportunity to also go to the Metropolitan Water District Apprenticeship Resource Fair, and after that, the Dr. Margaret Hill US Postal Service renaming for her. It's such a great event. It's amazing to see community out there, and just for one of our community leaders, and I want to give a huge thanks to Congressman Aguilar for bringing this, for changing not only like the post office, the name of it, but bringing this attention and fighting for San Bernardino at the national level. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Charette?
Thank you, Mayor. I too was pleased and honored to attend the dedication of the post office on Date Street in honor of Margaret Hill. Margaret Hill, I was pleased that she was a constituent of mine, and she was just phenomenal. She retired three times, and if she had not died, she probably would be retiring a fourth. But she gave back so much to this community and to the school district and to others, and it was an honor to represent her as well as to be there, and she's a very, very deserving honoree, and this is just, this is probably the biggest, I think, honor that she's maybe had given to her, and yet I think the list goes on and on and on for all the awards and honors that she's received over her long, long life and career. And I was pleased to be there, along with my other colleagues that attended. Thank you.
Thank you. And my turn. I just have a few updates. I recently was appointed to the Southern California Association of Governments, SCAG, Regional Council. Thank you, council. And I attended the new member orientation on February 26th. I'm extremely excited for this opportunity to represent District Seven, which includes city of Highland and city of San Bernardino. We have a meeting tomorrow. On February 28th, I attended the 12th Annual Pioneer Breakfast at Cal State San Bernardino with Councilmember Ortiz, as well as Councilmember Flores, hosted by the Black Faculty Staff and Student Association and the USPS Dedication, as well as with my council member colleagues in honor of Dr. Margaret Hill, who always, I will always remember, it's all about the children, and that is beautiful. I would also like to take a moment to recognize the retirement of Erica Lithin, who has dedicated incredible 33 years of service to the city, and throughout her tenure, Erica has been a committed and valued member of our team, contributing her time and expertise and passion to helping our city thrive. Her dedication, hard work have made a lasting impact, and she would be truly missed. On behalf of the city, I want to express my deepest gratitude for her service and wish her the best of life in her new chapter, in her retirement. I also heard that we have an employee who reaches 35 years with the city still active, Robert Sepulveda, in the public works. Amazing dedication, and I would love if the city manager's office would work with HR to bring back the recognition of employee service, because I remember when I worked here, that five-year, 10-year, 15-year, I mean, it means a lot just to say thank you, and that acknowledgement really means a lot to employees, just that small token. So thank you so much, everyone. We will now adjourn the meeting. It's before seven, everyone. It's 6:52 PM. The next joint regular meeting of the mayor and city council and the mayor and city -- 6:45? Oh, the computer time is wrong. It's 6:45 PM. The next joint regular meeting of the mayor and city council and the mayor and city council acting as the successor agency to the redevelopment agency, and the mayor and city council acting as the San Bernardino City Housing Authority, and the mayor and city council of the city of San Bernardino acting as the San Bernardino Joint Powers Finance Authority will adjourn to the regular meeting to be held on March 19th, 2025, here at the Paltime Central Library located at 555 West Sixth Street, San Bernardino, California 92401. Closed session will begin at 4:00, and open session will begin at 5:00 PM. Good night, everyone. Get home safely.